All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to thank you for attending this morning, the Committee of the Whole Work Session, today, Tuesday, May 16th, at 10:30. And on our agenda, the first item we have is our minutes from the April 18th meeting. And then, we are going to have a presentation today by the Flintlock Range Association. And I'd like to welcome you. And I see that there are a number of people who are involved and engaged with the association. And we want to thank all of you for attending. All right, Orbis, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
Orbis, if you can give me just one minute, I'll get the slides out.
Okay.
Which one do you want first? You want the history, or ...?
Yeah, I'll start with the history.
So we do all have it electronically?
We just have to do it.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so Orbis is going to share a little bit about the Flintlock Range Association and its history.
Okay. Prior to, or going back to 2007 and before, there were a number of groups that had tried setting up a range. And for one reason or another, they failed. So, in 2012, a small group of us got together and decided we were going to give it a run. And we looked all over for a piece of property where it could be held. And there again, for one reason or another, wetlands, or whatever, maybe oriented the wrong direction, because we wanted to keep this very safe. It just didn't work out until 2018, when this county and Forest Service Land Exchange came up. And as soon as we found out about it, we started looking at it. And it really seemed to fit the bill. We could orient in the direction where there's just public land down range for at least five miles. And I know there's going to be some activity in that area, but it's going to be probably the safest place, and it's the farthest away from any private land. There's a piece of private land there about, maybe three quarters of a mile to the south. But when we did a sound study, the ravens going by made more noise than the gunshots. Anyway, there's a lot of possibilities in this. We can make it a multi-use facility, where we can have shooting leagues, firearm safety instruction for both adult and the youth, ATV, snowmobile safety, archery, high school trap league, which is the fastest-growing sport right now. We can make it ADA accessible. And also, we've been asked to include biathlon. And there's, sounds like quite a bit of interest in having biathlon. So this would work, too. And we always do this with an eye towards safety and environmental best practices, where we can reclaim the lead. The land is all high ground. Dave Demmer went in there in 2018 and did a wetland survey. He found nothing. And it's just, seems like it doesn't have a lot of bedrock, or any bedrock to contend with. So there's a lot of soil there that can be used for berms, just backstops and that sort of thing. It was logged over probably 10 years or so ago, maybe, maybe a little longer. So there is regrows coming in there. But it's all small stuff, and it wouldn't take too much to develop it. The public support has been really strong. And we did a Survey Monkey back in 2015, and there again, it, the support was overwhelming, the amount of people that were all in favor of this. And one of the things that came out was, "Well, I probably am not interested in using it, but let's get the lead out and get it contained in one area." And I think this environmental concern is huge. In the gravel pits that are being used now, I don't know how you reclaim the lead out of there. It'd be pretty tough, I think. And it's really not a safe place to shoot, because there's rocks in there and bullets ricochet. And, yeah, it's just not, not good. This also would provide a really good place for our law enforcement to go and do their qualifications and training. They could set up a Conex there, where they could store their equipment, their barricades, whatever they need to use. And I think that would be, really, really work out well. Right now, our Border Patrol are going to Silver Bay to do their qualifications. And they could do it here locally, then. The gravel pits seem to catch a lot of debris. The one thing that I really don't like to see is where people bring their bottles in there and shoot them. You end up with broken glass all over. They don't pick up their empty shells, especially their shotgun shells that are, have plastic in them. And they're, they just lay there and, they lay there and lay there. You know, they don't, don't go away. So, anyway, I think it is just a really good thing there. Also, during the time that the law enforcement would be using this for their training, it would be closed to the public. They'd put a sign up saying, "Close this day for law enforcement." And I think that would keep them safer, also. And we, we have a, a number of people with a lot of skills that would really be helpful in building this. And they'd also be instructors, just making this really come together for us. We also have a lot of support from the YMCA, the school, for their school activities. It's just been really good, all the support. And when I walk down the street, run into people and say, "Hey, you know, tell me about this gun range. I'd like to see this happen. I ran into two guys yesterday, and one the day before." You know, it's just, all the time. So, anyway. So, we'd like to move forward with the support of the county board. And we'll have to get appropriate permits from Land Services. And the county attorney's office would have to come up with a lease, but we already have samples of leases of other ranges in the state that are on county property, so they don't have to reinvent, reinvent the wheel. We've identified funding sources, and at this time, we're not looking for money from the county, without using county funds. So, we're putting the heavy emphasis on youth and environmental best practices. That's about all I've got to say.
Just so Orbis' relationship to the organization is known, Orbis, Orbis is currently serving as Vice President of the Flintlock Range Association. And I know today on our packet, it mentions that Justin Rexrode is the President. He was unable to attend today because of work, so that is why Orbis is here presenting.
So we brought Scott Donlin.
And Scott, although he's not on the board, has been very involved and engaged. Even though this has been a process that's been going on for over a decade, he's had some very recent involvement, and maybe you'd like to share some of your experience and knowledge.
Yeah, I guess I've just been supportive of this ever since I heard about it. And, yeah, just trying to help out as much as I can to keep the ball rolling. And I think it should be known that we're the only county in the state that doesn't have a designated shooting range, which I thought was really surprising when I heard that. And talking to other ranges and other people outside of Cook County, when we talk about our vision for this range, and having, you know, potentially up to 500 yards of, you know, shooting space, people from outside of the area are supportive of that, because there's not a ton of those in the state. So, you know, we could be drawing people from outside of the area up here to recreate, if we have a facility like this.
No, in our packet, we have a map of the area that shows potential designations for different parts of the acreage that's included in this property. And one of the things down the line could be a full presentation to the board at another committee of the whole, kind of explaining in real detail what the history is, how it's laid out. But I think right now, they're very engaged and very involved in the process of getting the organization up and running, now that the land exchange actually has happened. And Scott and Orbis, maybe you want to take a minute to talk about where you are in the process of working with the organization to bring things current.
We have, we've gone through quite a bit of work getting articles and incorporation. We've gotten bylaws, safety range rules in place. We got the Zoom Business Name being reactivated. We had one in place for a while, and then we didn't, we let it go. And now, that's in the city, it's being taken care of. We've got our federal identification number, and we've got a bank accounts, and a P.O. box, and an email account. So we really have been moving along. We did a sound study. In fact, I've got copies here, I think. Where did I put them? I thought I had them here, anyway.
We have the note for the results.
Yeah, okay, you got the results. Okay, yeah, here they are. But anyway, that's great. We, we know we're going to need another wetland survey, because the other one has expired We know we're going to need liability insurance. And we have gotten quotes on that. We've gotten support from our local law enforcement, the Border Patrol, and Customs. We also got a letter from Grand Portage supporting this. We've got support from ISD 166, and the YMCA. And I think that's about, I think that's about all we, yeah. But anyway, we, we've got support from a large number of organizations here.
And we've got a draft of, oh, sorry. We've got a draft of the lease that, for this as well, that, you know, with support of the Committee of the Whole, then one of the next steps would be to, I'm not really sure of the exact order, but something that we could present to the county attorney's office, and work with them with the lease from the county.
Commissioner Mills.
Ma'am Chair, thank you, and thanks for being here, you guys. And I know this has been long coming. I remember when it was being talked about before the land exchange, and we were kind of waiting for the land exchange, and waiting, waiting for the land. And now, it's, it's great that it's gone through. And just for everyone's reference, this is up on Kimball Meadows Road, or the old dump road. And in, in the packet, there's a good map of the site, but it doesn't give the context of where it is exactly. So it's just up the trail, just, just across Millbrook Lake issue and that area. And just like you laid out, it's, we're the only county in the state that doesn't have one, and ideally, it's not in a highly populated area, and it's not. And it just is a really good fit. And the only thing I would ask is for the group to come to the Parks and Trails Commission and just give them some data on what you're thinking, just so they can, we can hear that too.
Okay.
But, yeah, huge community support. I grew up with safety training, had numerous gun ranges in Itasca County, and then shooting in the basement, I think, of the YMCA. I can't even remember where, where that was now. But it's just a really important thing for our youth, and for all of our law enforcement, and, and for the safety of just recreation as well. And that does it, it's, it's all around a good, a good idea, I think. Yeah, I just really appreciate you sticking with it, and blowing them off.
Well, we started in 2012, and now, here we are, seven years. Yeah, we were getting pretty, pretty played out.
Right.
Takes grit and persistence. Commissioner Storley, you had your hand up.
Thank you, ma'am Chair. So you mentioned that you have a checking account. So how does that work? Do you have people get ...?
We did, got some donations.
Okay, so you're not charging for people to go over?
We will.
You will?
We will. There'll be memberships.
Membership, okay.
That's how we'll be able to do the maintenance and, you know, get this going. But we've been looking at a lot of grants, too, for the construction.
And before we, before we start accepting memberships, we want to have something to offer people for their membership. So that's why we're not officially offering memberships, we're taking membership dues right now, because we don't really have anything to provide for that. So we're taking any donation we can.
So you'd have different combinations of family and individual?
Right.
And business, you know, for somebody who wants to do concealed permit type classes for shooting, you know, they, they could get a business type membership, so.
It'd be category.
It is, it is.
Well, there's, there's a lot that the group has accomplished already. One of the things I'm really excited about, in, in addition to just having a place where the community can go to safely engage in shooting sports, I'm really appreciative of, so appreciative, of an addressment of the environmental concerns. I go out to gravel pits, I pick up, I see what's there. And it's not just the lead, it's not just the plastic from the shells, people are shooting televisions. There's all kinds of stuff in our environment that should not be out there. So addressing those environmental concerns, and creating a safe place that we can share with law enforcement, is really, really important to our county. And it would be great to, to be a part of the other 86 counties, and make it a statewide thing, to have this type of facility in Cook County. One of the, the things, I know you have a lot of work yet to do before you probably come back to the Committee of the Whole again, with further information, but there's a lot of work that will need to be done around grants. And one of the people I happen to see in the audience is Clarin Cognis, who is the Treasurer, and also works with grants. Clarin, would you like to come up and share any information with our group?
I have a plan on that, ma'am.
I sure will.
Careful with the cord, it's a short cord.
I'll, I'll sit for it sooner or later. My name's Clarin Cognis. I live in Grand Ray. Do we need to talk into the microphone?
Yeah, please, thank you. Just so our public hear.
Okay, we'll start this again. My name is Clarin Cognis. I've lived in Grand Ray on Birch Drive since about 2017. I come, I came up from the Rochester/Zambroda area. I've been a president of a club in Zambroda for a number of years. I belong to, you know, some of my memberships now last, but I belong to more clubs than I've ever thought I would become a member of. I've worked with high school trap and skeet teams in my time, helped instruct, helped work with them. And I've written some grants, using the DNR grant process. I think you mentioned Itasca County. The guy who used to be the soil and water person in Itasca County, Chuck Niska. When I was working, when I was still employed, I worked for the federal government, and I worked for the soil and water conservation part of things. And Chuck was the district person in Itasca. And I've known Chuck Niska for, oh goodness, now I'm going to date myself, for probably 25 or 30 years now. But I, I think, you never know for sure if you'll get the grant. But I, I think we have a pretty good chance. Once we figure out what we want to do, we'll start writing grants and see where we can go from there. So hopefully, we can, we can get some grants and get it up and running. But I think you asked about memberships and that kind of thing. And Scott, you were, you were saying, "Yeah, we're not going to, we can't charge now." But one of the things that I would also like to see is, we are the only county in the state that doesn't have a high school trap team?
We're not the only.
Oh, okay, okay. One of the very few. But I think that, I think if we can get a trap range established, maybe a skeet range, something like that, gives some of the people a chance to shoot shotgun sports. I think that would be a boon to it as well. And that would bring in a little bit of money. You're never going to get, you're never going to make a lot of money on that, but you could at least cover your costs, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and community like ours, that's so, all the right focus, it's, you know, one of those missing pieces that I think is, is good to the class.
Well, I think the firearm safety day that I know that I've, I've seen, and at last year, as a matter of fact, I think that the DNR really doesn't, I think they'd rather be off that private property, if I'm not mistaken, so they, they could come up to, to a place like this and not have to worry about the private property with any problems with that.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you say you, you have sample leases, and I'm wondering how that works in other counties of leasing? How long are the, what is the terms? And how much does a county charge for that, sir, for that?
I don't have a copy, a copy down here, but it seems to me that, one of the cast late, seems to me they were charging, county charged about $100 a year. And the lease was for 25 years, I believe, to start with, and then it was renewable after that.
And then, how is the liability insurance handled, for the county and for the club?
We cover, the, the insurance, we cover that. And there's a minimum of, I believe, $1 million liability. And it's, it's really not all that expensive. I think one of the quotes I got was like, $400 to $500 a year, depending on the number of men, now members.
And how does that work with NCID?
Great question. And I'm not sure of the answer to that. Brady's, Brady's here, I don't know if he has any insight on that, but I, that's okay. That's something that we need to explore. I also was going to say, I mean, I think we need to look at, we can get sample leases from other counties where they have this kind of arrangement, and just see kind of how those agreements are structured. But the insurance, the liability question is, is a really important one, because Scott was wondering, you're going to have members, and they're going to be authorized users, but what about people potentially coming in after hours and, and using it without authorization? And if there's an incident, you know, who's on the hook for that? So we need to make sure we understand the answer to that question.
We don't plan on having a lot gate. And so, it would be gated, but that's not saying that there wouldn't be a lot of roaming gates.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and I guess I bring that up because of the meeting I was in yesterday, insurance liability came up, and, well, who's responsible? And I just, I support this. I think it's a great idea, just to make sure.
And there's, you know, as we've mentioned, a lot of steps yet that have to occur to get this up and ready. But clearly, working on the lease, looking at the insurance, and providing a lease and working with our county attorney would, would be a big piece of it.
If I'm, if I may add, I know that when I was President down in Zambroda, and I think we've talked about this already, we had, we didn't have a lease, it was, it was a private property thing, but if we got a grant with the DNR, we had to have at least $1 million of liability insurance. And that was something that the club, that was just one of their expenses, just like anything else. So, I'm, so we'd have to be doing something along the same lines. But that had a clubhouse and some other things, so of course, the rates started, started to go up, so.
Other question? Well, thank you very much for coming forward this morning, presenting the information, informing the board. Even though we've been waiting 12 years, we hope the next, next leg of the journey will not be quite so lengthy.
What else would you need, Orbis?
Well, I was going to say, I mean, if we could, if you know of counties that already have an arrangement like this with a, with a shooting club, it'd be helpful to contact them. So, yeah, and I'd be happy to make the call to the administrator in that county and just get that lease agreement, so.
I, I might add that you might want to contact Chuck Niska from the DNR, and I can give you his contact information.
That'd be great.
Because he is, he is the person who administers the grants, and I know there's a number of leases on clubs that he's worked with around the state of Minnesota. The counties and the, and the club have been in this lease agreement together, so he might be a really good place to start. So I'll definitely get that information to you.
Great.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate all the support the community is showing.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, our next item on our agenda is a funding request from the National Center for Public Lands County. And we'll turn it over to Administrator Yorki.
All right. So, last month, we received a request from Ryan Erdman at, at the Association of Minnesota Counties regarding concept that the, that NACO and the Western, I'm not going to remember the acronym, off the top of my head, it's like the Western Interstate Group, or something like that.
Western Interstate Region.
Region, thank you. They are proposing to create a National Center for Public Lands. And the way that they want to fund it is using the most recent round of ARPA, that is American Rescue Plan Act, funding that, that counties have received. Cook County is one of the counties in the, in the state that has received one of the larger allocations. Our two-year allocation was, was over $2 million. And so, they're asking for a 1% contribution, which for our county would be over $20,000. And so, I, I talked with Ryan, I got more information about it. The information we have is in your packet. And I told him, I thought this would be a really difficult thing for the board to consider, just because we have lots of projects that we could be funding with these dollars. And so, even though it's a relatively small percentage of the overall award, it's not small in terms of the number of dollars that we would be basically giving back. So AMC was very clear that they were, they were not endorsing the request, they were simply bringing it forward for the counties to consider. So there is peer pressure, but there is not peer pressure. The, the board is a very, yes.
Yes.
So, you know, the board is free to make its own decision. And again, it's, you know, if, if we agree to fund this on some level, whether it's the full 1%, or, or something less than that, it's a diversion of dollars that could be used locally to, to this larger project that, that is outside our county. So, it's really as simple as that. I know it's an unusual request. From my perspective, it would have been nice for this idea to have come about before we knew that we were getting this funding, because, you know, it's after the fact now. And we've already discussed how we want to use the plan, the dollars. And housing is at the top of the list for using it for, we've already allocated $700,000 of it for, for housing. And we have numerous other projects, including the Capital Improvement Plan that we'll be talking about next. So, yeah, that's, that's basically the request in the show. And I know that you've talked with Commissioner S Fay and ...
I talked with Commissioner S Fay, and to date, Beltrami County and Lake County are the only two counties in Minnesota that have allocated resources. Their, the resources they're allocating are significantly less than ours, because that 1% is a smaller amount. My thought is, I would really like to go to our AMC district meetings and visit with other counties about how they perceive this, and have more conversation with other individuals. Commissioner Storley, did you ever hear back from Mary Jo McGuire about this?
I did, no.
Okay. Because her name was on the letter that, that came from NACO as well, and we haven't heard back from her. So I'm just a little reluctant ... heard back from her. So I'm just a little reluctant to think about it either way till we get more information. But I too feel like it would have been nice to have this information earlier. It seems like it's coming rather late. A decision does not have to be made. They would like to have commitments by December of 2023, so we have plenty of time. But we felt since the letter was sent in April, it should come forward to our May committee of the whole. I also did some research and got a few slides from the National Center for Public Lands County. I'll send it to everyone so that you have your own particular copy. But it's very, very general information. It doesn't give me personally enough detail to find out what the benefits are specifically going to be for Cook County. And that's what I'm interested in. Other commissioners?
Now, as my question, what, I mean, it's, what does Cook County get? I mean, we're not nestled among all of this. And we got a little bit of public lands around here. So, yeah, what do we get for our money?
I also had a conversation with Commissioner Sway about this. And the way he framed it, and I think that's a fair way, is what did we get? And I was, two million dollars. That's why we got the two million dollars, is because of the work of this group. So for me, that was like, all right, if that's, if that's how that went down, okay, I can, I'm pretty grateful for that. And sure, that isn't gonna happen again, you know? We're not gonna just get two million dollars again, but the fact that that group orchestrated that, I'd, I'd like to invest, pay back.
How do you know they did that?
Commissioner Sway, he's part of that.
So he said he did?
He didn't, no, but.
I mean, he said that, that Cook County got more money from their intervention? I mean, there had to have been criteria, criteria for that money being dispensed.
Yep. And it's the public lands.
Yeah, we got.
No, but I mean, that's why.
Why, we got more outright.
The most of all the counties, we got the most. And just because of the advocacy of WIR, I guess, is what he was saying.
Just a matter of the timing, though.
Commissioner Hawkins, you had a question?
I'm just curious. So we got one-time funds that they want us to give 1% back to. What's the ongoing funding mechanism?
Says they are going to be a 501(c)(3) with the NACO Research Foundation.
So how Commissioner Sway framed it is this one-time investment is enough nationally to keep it going. I didn't see his spreadsheet.
I guess, yeah. I am, I also checked out the website, and it's very generic. And I'm like, we're a very small county with lots of public lands. Yeah, I just.
And, and.
I think we need a new boiler instead.
We need lots of those.
The fundraising goal, which is to come from counties, is fifteen million dollars over two years. So that's the goal, and it's to establish a new research fund.
I think that'd be a good idea to discuss about.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I'm sure we'll get more questions answered from Commissioner Sway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't realize that it was kind of a, we'll send you the money, however in the future, we want something back. I just thought it was a plan out, you know, because we have the land.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there's no, I don't think there's any, there weren't strings attached, right? Even now, it's, all they can do is ask. And we can say no, but, yeah. Well, I'm sure just, that's a really smart.
Well, and because we have some, like, public land, we have a reduced tax base to fund the county. I mean, we don't have any taxpayers. We got public lands. So thank you very much for helping us to survive. But, you know, you got more money back from us.
Well, I think we'll see at our district meeting what additional information we have, not only from Commissioner Sway, but also from the other counties to get their perspective on it. And just be prepared to ask, not just when we're at the table in the room, but informally, to ask other districts or other counties what they're doing. All right. Well, thank you.
Do you know, Commissioner, do you know, will this topic be featured at the district meeting?
I thought I would bring it up in my report as a question.
Because we might want to get a heads up. To, to, shoot, what's his name? Steve? No.
Ryan.
Ryan.
Russ?
Right, it's her thing.
And I think both Ryan and, and I think Matt Hilgar will be there also.
He's the one that just said.
Yeah. But I think he's gonna be there.
Probably staff is more appropriate anyways.
Yeah. I'm not sure which staff are gonna be attending this. All right. Well, thank you for bringing it forward.
Sure. All right. Shall we move on?
We shall.
All right.
For the item that everybody has been waiting for.
Yes, indeed. So the big news is, we have posted the draft CIP on the county's website. You can get from our, or you can get to it from our homepage. A lot of the information within it, you've already seen, it's the tables and stuff from the, from the two workshops. There is some new narrative, kind of providing background on space needs analysis and so on. Before getting into that a little deeper, I'd like to talk about the surveys that we administered after the second workshop. We did get back nineteen paper surveys. And then we have forty responses to the online survey, so about sixty total. Not, not a ton, but not insignificant. And what I'm doing right now is I'm putting those all, you know, there were long answers to some of those questions. I'm trying to put that in a format that is digestible, in a, like a PDF that I'll share with you and that we'll post on the website as well. But to kind of give the high-level view of the feedback we've gotten, people were generally very complimentary and supportive of our efforts to really get a handle on what do we have and what kind of shape is it in. They see a lot of value in that. They're happy that we did that work. And I think the last time that we did a CIP, I don't, I mean, looking at the documentation from that, I don't recall that we really did a deep dive on that as much. It was really more focused on space needs.
We're looking at our historian.
Yeah, no, I would.
Yeah. So, so there's a lot of support for that. And I think a lot of agreement generally that we need to invest in getting our buildings into better shape. Not universal agreement, but, but the strong majority of folks believe that. When it comes to proposals to add space to our current building footprint, there's a lot less agreement. To the question about whether we should consider building one or more new buildings, there was far more lack of support and support on that. We also asked the question, should the county look at adding space to existing buildings? And there was more support for that, but still a lot of questions about, you know, what is the need, you know, who, there were a lot of, not a lot, but there were comments to the effect of, you know, why, why does county government have so many staff members? Is this space really needed? You know, could, basically, could services be cut? Now, a lot of people also were very explicit about not wanting services to be cut. So again, there's really a diversity of opinion. I wouldn't say there's like a strong sentiment either way. There's, there were responses on both sides of that equation. So again, I'm putting that together, and I'll get that to you before the end of the week, and we'll post that on the website. But just wanted you to know that we do have that feedback. And I'm hoping that it will inform our conversation today. And as we move through the next month toward the second meeting in June, when you'll be asked to approve the CIP. So, looking at the CIP, there are basically two components. There's the deferred maintenance, which we have quantified in great detail. We know what that looks like. That's about thirteen point four million dollars. And I want to pause right there, because within deferred maintenance, we've got a list of twenty-five buildings that you've seen already. And some of those buildings are really central to our daily work. For example, the courthouse, we really can't function without the courthouse and the departments that we have located in this building. Then we have other buildings that are less central to our mission. Those include things like the historical society properties and the town halls. And we haven't really had a conversation about prioritizing the different buildings in this list. Now, looking at thirteen point four million dollars of potential investment, I think we need to have a conversation about how do we, how do we prioritize? We've got the information from the consultant. They generated that without bias, without any, any suggestion that, hey, we're not even gonna quantify this stuff, because we don't think you should own these buildings. That's really a board decision. And so that's a conversation that we need to have, that you need to have, because you are the policymakers and the decision makers. So one thing that I wanted to do today is kind of get that conversation started. And so that's one piece of it, is the deferred maintenance and how we go about prioritizing what's on that list. And then the second piece of the conversation is the deficit of space that we have in this building, and also at the law enforcement center. We did float three different concepts for, for creating additional space, both of which focused on either adding space here at the courthouse or over at the LEC, or some combination of the two. And so, again, the, the survey responses indicated that people were generally more in support of adding to existing buildings than creating new buildings. But beyond that, there's still uncertainty in the community about the need. We have toured, the commissioners have toured all the buildings. You've seen the spaces at the law enforcement center. Definitely have some issues there that need to be addressed, both in terms of the building condition and the, the lack of space for evidence storage and processing. And Sallyport's too small. All of that is known. But then also here in the, in the courthouse, where we don't have offices for our two HR staff. It's one point, one and a half FTE, full-time equivalents. And then also, our public information coordinator is officeing exclusively over at North Shore Health. That is a shared position with the hospital. And so far, that's working out. But is that an ideal situation? I would say, not really. But so there, there are lots of moving parts to this. And what I wanted to do today is start a conversation about the deferred maintenance list, about the buildings that are part of our portfolio, to get your feedback on what, if anything, we should do. Should we treat all of those buildings the same way? Is there a way that we should be prioritizing buildings and focusing more investment on key buildings like the courthouse, the LEC, the community center, the highway campus, and less attention on those other buildings? And then if the answer is yes, that's how we want to do it, then the question is, what of the, the buildings that are lower on the priority list? And I'm not, I, first of all, I don't want to suggest at all that the buildings that are lower on the list are somehow unimportant, because they all serve a purpose in the community. They're all used. The museum, for example, is a wonderful facility. I took my family there shortly after I first moved here. Really nicely done. And it really shines an important light on the history of this county. So not denigrating or minimizing that at all. But in terms of like, providing essential services to the community, it is not the same as like the law enforcement center. It's just, so, there's a policy, policy decision that, that has to be made about how we prioritize these investments, and how we, how we consider the, the future of these buildings. And that's one piece of it. And then the other piece of it is in terms of the concepts that we've put forward for the addition of new space. How does that, how does that figure into your thinking about the final version of the capital improvement plan? And so that's kind of the conversation I wanted to have today. We will have additional conversations over the coming weeks. One, one thing I should point out is, the last time that we did a CIP, we got to this stage where there was a concept that was primarily focused on adding new space. And it didn't move forward. My understanding is that plan was never actually approved by the board because of the controversy surrounding the need for new jail space. And so we're kind of where we were the last time. I think what's different this time is we've tried to do maybe a little more due diligence. We've certainly done a lot more public engagement. I've been on the radio. We've put articles in the News Herald. We've had open houses. We've really gone to your, your town hall meeting, Commissioner Light. So we've really tried to reach out to people. And we, we created an opportunity for people to access the information online, to provide feedback. Again, we got forty responses there, so I think that was fairly successful. But we're at a point now where we were the last time, where we have to move this forward, and the board's gonna have to make a decision at the end of June. I think June twenty-seventh is the meeting date, about the approval of this plan, what it contains, and what our next steps are going to be. So the addition of new space is really just concepts at this point. We don't have drawings or anything like that. And the approval of the plan in total would not necessarily, what it would do is it would lay a foundation for us to take the next steps in planning for, for new space, which would be a multi-step process. That would involve multiple approvals of the board to move forward. So it's not as if the approval of the plan is a guarantee that we're going to build new space. But I think it is essential for us to take the next steps in exploring those options. So that's, that's kind of where we are. Brady, I don't know, we, we did talk with Bruce Kimmel at Ellers last week. We had another call with him this week to put the financial management plan together. That obviously is a big component of this. And you guys can't make a decision without it. I wouldn't expect you to. So that's, that's being put together. And that would include a bonding strategy for, I think, a couple of different scenarios. One would be kind of like the whole enchilada with the addition of new space. We're also looking at if we just, for like the improvements or the upgrades to our existing buildings, without the addition of new space. We want to see what those both look like. But I think, you know, in my mind, it's pretty clear that we do need new space. And so being able to move forward on that is going to be important. And having the agreement of the board to take that step will be important. So I'm gonna just pause there and see if there are questions or thoughts. I know it's a lot.
Commissioner Storey?
I have a question and a comment. Was there a typo error for the Y to be built in nineteen fifty-one?
That would be the.
That would be the.
Oh, because it's misleading.
Yeah, the oldest section.
The old A.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make sure people understand.
Right.
The new facility is connected to the old facility.
Right.
Well, what I like here is the action year, that some things could be done this year, other things could be put out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Gives you a perspective of, not a panic of, oh, we gotta do it in twenty-three, but certainly a strong consideration.
And the, the timing of that is based on a number of factors relating to the condition of equipment, the priority of, of the building, for example. And they, they did, they did characterize things. And there's, actually, in the draft CIP, there's a really great description of the factors they use to, to assign priority level to each of these renewal projects. So, and that's why it's timed the way it is, because we have some equipment that can go a few more years. We have a lot of equipment that's not part of this plan at all, because it's fairly new. But we do have a lot of old equipment and a lot of projects, like the door casings over at the law enforcement center that are rusting out. I mean, those are things that we really can't ignore much longer.
And so, what did you say about the door casings?
They're rusting.
They're rusting because of the. They're rusting because of the salt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the back door in particular is just really bad.
I just didn't hear that word.
Other questions? Commissioner White.
I'm not convinced we need more space to do an addition. I mean, there's a lot of not well-used space in the basement in this building, underneath this building. I mean, it's storage at the moment. But I, at least, you know, people have closets you put in your own life. You put stuff in the closet and occasionally, you know, you don't build in closets because you're running out of space. You reevaluate what's in the closet or you get storage organization units or something like that. And I was going to ask Ryan, how many square feet of unused space is below this building? Because to think about... Because it has been said that we need more storage. We need social services. Everybody needs more storage for paper things. You have to have a storage, you have to save. So there's a lot downstairs already, but it's boxes labeled stacked. So how accessible are these... And rooms, rooms full of boxes that are stacked up with things. I mean, with documents and not questioning the value of those things. But I think that should be looked at. And then because there are many, if you go online, if you like Elon or whatever, different types of document storage. Vertical shelving, different things like that. I mean, I don't have the answer on that, but there are better ways to store things so you can find what you need to organize than what is down there already. Two, there are other ways to think about people having offices. Now, I don't know how often everybody is in... And I'm going to focus on social services, human public health and human services. I toured up there. And every room has a window, about one, which I think is wonderful. These offices have light. And two people in each space, they have their desktops. And they have more. They have shelving. They have different things. And for those employees that were there when I took the tour, they all said, well, when they have to deal with confidential information, they have to have a visit with somebody else. I just get up or the other person gets up and will take care of it and go elsewhere to do it. I was speaking with a person with experience from in the... That there are other ways to organize office spaces. Actually, no one would have their very own space. Everybody has a laptop. There will be many, many office spaces if a social worker, I just had a need to connect with a client. There will be a space. They would schedule for that space. The person would come in and shut the door. They would use that time, that space. They'd have their desktop there if they were going to do a Zoom meeting. And then there would be, and this is the piece that I failed to ask when the person was telling me how, there would be a place where they could go and work on their own to do their own things. The question I had was, that came up too late, was do our social workers have paper files that they keep track of and access during the course of a workday? I don't know that because that would be a change that... But with the existing space that's up there, I was actually, and I think I shared this with James, I was thinking about, there's not a room in social services that is as small as what the school superintendent, finance person, head of maintenance, that they work out of. If you go up to the school superintendent's office, it's far smaller than who has a small office in this space. And they have confidential things. And they do not work, I understand. They don't have people coming in from the community on a regular basis like Human Services does. But I'm not totally convinced, and I think that is the issue, that, well, again, it's early on. Everyone, I agree, is all in favor of taking care of what we have. However, that is prioritized. I know law enforcement is capable of big support for the law enforcement and community center. And this is just, I didn't do a survey. I mean, this is just people talking. And so, but the question is, what do you mean you need more space? And so that needs to be explained further. Because I personally am not convinced. You've got too much stuff in your garage. So what do you do? You build another garage? No, you look at what you've got in your garage. And then if you're lucky, you haul it out. And then for a couple of months, you can get your car in before you fill it up again. I just think we need to examine how the employees perform work. I mean, the whole... I mean, I never thought that there was a different format for office workers. That's not my realm of...
A different format?
Yes, that they would each, no one would have their own office with their name on it. Not, I mean, their own designated space. It would all be shared space all the time. And actually, the person that gave me that information was Rena Rogers, who was talking about. I don't remember if she said it was her sister or niece or somebody that was working in spaces that are not like that. So she would be the person that...
And that is, I mean, that is a very common arrangement in modern office design.
So my question is, has that been explored? I'm sure we're going to need to do renovations, remodeling, moving walls, things like that. We've got half of the... MIT department.
MIS.
MIS department.
IT.
Yeah. That are quite capable of moving things around and setting any space, I believe. I'm putting a lot on them. But any space that is created, that they would be able to get the the technology into those spaces. So that would be a hindrance if we didn't have that ability. But I believe that everybody has a laptop that works here. Is that true? Or maybe not down in the highway department. But they have a laptop so that they can take their work with them down the hall and wherever they go. So that's something I think really needs to be explored before a decision is made that we need more space.
So if I could respond to your first question about the basement. So that suggestion actually came up in our budget in Facilities Advisory Committee meeting. And I met with the person who said, oh, the basement would be... You know, we think lots of people down there. I met with him and we went through each room. And there is space down there. There is a lot of stuff down there. And there's a lot of equipment that frankly we need to keep somewhere. Voting machines, for example.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's not like we can just, you know, build something up in the business park and just move everything up there. There's radio equipment down there. There are voting machines. There are files that people in this building have to access periodically. There is a lot of stuff, frankly, that if I were king, and I'm not, I would just throw in the dumpster. Like, for example, a tax payment ledger from like nineteen twelve. I literally pulled this off the shelf. And I bet you I'm the first person since nineteen twelve to look at this.
I saw that one, actually.
Wasn't that a great one?
So you're probably the second person.
So, I mean, and I get, I get that... Let me finish.
Oh, yeah. I'm not going to come down on you about destroying the historical.
Right. I mean, I'm sure you're not. I'm sure you're not.
But I'm not talking about, I'm not, I already did that. So I'm not going to talk about, I mean, I'm just looking at the basement strictly for storage, if need be, and forget the whole attachment to the historical society thing. But just how much square footage of storage would we have, could we have down there? And then having our own climate control systems put in place down there, whatever that would take, you know? Something that should be seriously looked at and given some estimates to that. But putting people down there would take a lot more effort.
So let me finish what I was saying.
No, I won't.
Okay, thanks. So I took, it was Randy Knudsen. I mean, he brought it up in the meeting. And so I took him down there. And we went through each room and looked at what's in each space there. And there's a lot of stuff, frankly, that doesn't have a better place. It kind of needs to be in this building. There are things that could certainly either be stored offsite or, heaven forbid, discarded. So, I mean, I think there is some room down there. There are some really significant environmental issues that need to be remediated. The water drainage off the roof that comes down and we get backups and then we have water all over the floor. There's persistent mold and mildew down there. And I don't know what would be involved in terms of, first of all, it's a historic building, right? So you've got that to contend with. But fully remediating that and making it a place where people could safely work, that would be a pretty big lift. So I'm not saying it's insurmountable, but it would be a big issue that we would have to address. We could potentially gain some space down there. I mean, some of those spaces were offices before they became storage. Would it be sufficient to serve our needs? And also, would it be functional, just from an operational standpoint? I don't know. I don't know. Because that's the kind of thing that after we approve this plan, we would need to get somebody who like works with this stuff to advise us on what are the possibilities? Because we, I mean, we have ideas about how to use space, but we're not architects and we don't have that expertise. So, you know, I... We have talked about, to answer your other question, we have talked about this idea of hoteling, which is where we have like carols that, you know, people bring their laptops in, they can work from there. I think that would be an option for some of our staff. I don't know how that would work from an operational standpoint. And I think probably a good step to take in that regard would be to reach out to some departments that are using that model. And, you know, if we're looking specifically at public health and human services, is that kind of thing feasible from an operational standpoint? I'm sure it could be. I don't know how that looks, though. I really want to look at other counties that are using that kind of approach to see how it works, what they like about it, what they don't like about it. There's a lot more information that we have to gather. But the questions that you're asking are the right ones. And they are ones that we've considered and need to probably more fully explore in the next phase of this work.
Commissioner Mills.
So with the tour with PHHS, and they would go, they would just leave the room. Were they saying that as, it's like, no big deal? Or that's what they have to do?
It's what they have to do if they make it work. Nobody was rousing. They're all very polite.
What's rousing?
Complaining, whining, showing this pleasure, sharing their happiness.
You're saying that professionally.
Yeah. They were, they were.
So a question you brought up that struck me is the idea of paper and storage and how much and what is required to be kept on paper versus what can be electronic? And I think that's a really good question that you had. And then also the question about what's in the basement. I'm really good at pitching things. I love history, too. So I'm not saying pitch all of it, but I'm thinking, you know, there's an opportunity. I'm going to use that word in a positive way. There's an opportunity.
I hope Dusty Owens is not listening to this.
There's an opportunity to look through and see what would be really important to save that's part of our community, that's part of our shared history, that's important to us all, and then what other things can be digitized. Commissioner Hawkins.
I'd like to get Auditor Power's opinion on that and what are auditors saying about recorded doc, physical documents versus electronic documents for audit purposes?
Oh, well, you're talking about ongoing, not historical documents innovation?
When I used to work in that office and had to dig physically, they wanted to see that document. You had to physically find that document.
Some of it is whether, if it's a data request, we have to go through and look at, there are certain things you have to keep. There's a list from the state. Some things you have to keep forever. Some things you have to keep for five years, twenty years. And the difficulty with that, I'm not saying, I'm not avoiding the question, is that in the digital age, they've not updated their states. They just attach the old ones to new things. So I know a lot of counties have digitized a lot of things. So I know there's a, there's a, there's a lot of possibility for that. Just going down there. I think some of your own minute books and things, that's historical. If you go down and look at those, you'd want to say, oh, but we should get a auditor as soon as we can either find a climate-controlled space now or change it, you know, down there to keep it here. So some of it is historical. Some of it, we have to go through and look at that and think you actually have to keep. And I think a lot of people, for sure.
Helpful to know.
It's a whole mix of politics.
I'm happy to help with that.
So Alison McIntyre has joined us. And we were talking, Alison, about reference retention. And I know that the state has requirements for the information that you guys have on file. And I think like generally, isn't it, like, a lot of it has to be kept for seven years?
Yeah, come up to the microphone and that way everyone can hear you.
Me too. We just had a spring cleaning day in that department for us. So I was recently revisiting our record retention schedules for the various human services files. And it's all defined in statute or bulletins from VHS, depending on the program area. Some of them are tied to the child's age. Some are tied to the day that a case closes or an individual passes away. Some files are retained indefinitely in the case of adoption assistance case files. We have done some work, I overheard Brady talking a bit, about moving towards imaging closed case files. We've done that in some cases for human services as a way to manage our physical space needs. Right now, we have a small file room in our front office area. And then we have filing in the basement as well. So we, within the last four years, started scanning our closed case files and then destroying the physical copies. We're running up against space issues right now with the electronic storage for those files and are troubleshooting that with MIS in terms of purchasing external hard drives to back that up because the digital storage options are very costly.
Can you talk a little bit about the process of like digitizing all that in terms of both the time that is needed? And then also, it's really critical that you get the indexing right. Like you have the right keywords and so on, else the scan is not really retrievable and you can't get what you're looking for. And I've never done that work myself, but I knew that it can be really time-consuming. So can you share a little bit about that?
Sure. So for human services, we are, we do not have an electronic document system for social services as we do with our economic assistance and healthcare programs. In that program area, we're a part of a regional collaborative where St. Louis County provides IT support and project management for our electronic document systems. And that includes a lot more technical aspects in terms of how those documents are routed to workers. There's workforce... There's workflow components to that as well in scanning. But with human services, we've created, I hate to say rudimentary, but it's just a really basic system to scan and archive those case files. But it still involves, you know, software, it involves the staff time scanning that. Our practice has been to use a character recognition software so that if a, a social worker should have a need to search for something in a closed case file that they could search. You know, some of these closed files are, you know, multiple volumes. In some cases, we're working with individuals throughout their entire lifespan. And that can be a lot of files that we're maintaining, a lot of data that we're maintaining on that individual. So it can really vary depending on the individual, the type of services that they're receiving for our department. But yes, it's a pretty intensive, time-intensive process in terms of scanning that, ensuring that, you know, the identifying information is, is indicated. And what's challenging for our staff is that it's Isabella in the front office who is doing that scanning and she's also answering phones and directing walk-ins and other functions as well. So at the point that we went live with our economic assistance electronic document management system, we had, you know, dedicated staff time to go through and scan all of those closed case files to determine what is going forward with the electronic case, what can be destroyed based on the type of document it is and how old it is. So that was a very involved process to move towards a full electronic document system.
It's helpful. It just helps us understand how complex it is.
And when I did the tour, Brian started the tour downstairs, I'm talking about the basement now. And he said, in this room, I saw the voting machines, I saw all that, the ballot boxes. He said, I asked if anybody ever came down to look at any of that. And he said, yeah, he said, yeah, public health comes down a couple of times a week and they look at stuff in this one room. And that was the full extent of his knowledge. And so I was just wondering how often any of your staff has, have to access stuff in the basement?
I would have to ask them to, to learn more about.
I mean, just, I mean, I, like, is the stuff in the basement working? Things you need for working on jobs or to help the community now? Or is it all like history to go back somewhere? I mean, it sounds like, you know, it's case files of individuals for their lifetimes. But actually what's in the boxes down there right now? Do they have to be readily accessible? I guess that's my only question. Not that they would be tucked back in a corner and, but just that they can just live down there with a really good organizational index system so you can, oh, yeah, we're going to do the third, third shelf up, get the wrap down, white box with a little heart on it, this is the one. You know, whatever it is. So that was a question because you weren't here for this, but I'm wondering the feasibility of turning the entire basement area, every room into storage and then adding in climate control. I don't know if it needs to be in everyone. I don't know if we have documents that, my God, they can never burn or ruin, big trouble. What is the fire suppression system for down there? Is it foam or is it water?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
If it's water, we're just going to like, let's just soak down all these boxes of paper and see what happens. You know, I mean, it was just a question that flashed through at some point.
I mean, I think it's water, but I don't.
I mean, should it all be in a fireproof, you know, I mean, it's just, is this building fireproof? I mean, where, where?
So there's the question about accessibility, but then there's also the question of statutory requirement.
Oh, yeah.
Saving. And my understanding was that those files down there are not files that we have the discretion to.
Okay, so those apps, we stay.
Yeah, I would say within the last four years, we did a purge of the public health storage area specific to health promotion materials, old files that had passed retention. So I'm confident that what we have in storage are things that we are required to maintain. And I would trust Brian's assessment if staff are accessing that space on an ongoing basis.
Just one room, he said, they might have tuned it up.
And Brian's offsite a lot, so I mean, he's not sitting down there counting.
But we have limited space to store things like a 95 mask or pens with child and teen checkup logos, you know, health promotion or health prevention activities for, you know, general community health outreach or, you know, our pandemic response. So we have staff going down there to access items. The office that I'm about to move in has some car seats in it. So that's, we're going to have to figure out where those again go, probably in the storage basement, unfortunately.
New shelving, new shelving. And we talked about having a water issue. You know, it's not good to have a water issue for years and years. So the water comes off the roof and then it, okay, there are solutions and they're not going to be inexpensive and you're going to have to get somebody that knows how to deal with it. But you're going to have to, you're going to have to help move the water away from the building and then fix the building. I have no idea what that would cost. But you own a building that's being slowly eroded or if it's the mold. I mean, that's a health issue and that's not going to go away until the water issue is solved. It's a pretty unglamorous thing to have to do, but it's like homeowners.
It's fundamental.
Yes, you just, you just like, okay, we're going to fix it so every spring the carpet does not become soggy and then we have to blow it and the whole place smells like.
And it doesn't happen every year, but it has happened periodically over the years.
It was kind of soggy when I was young.
We, I mean, so we've, we have kicked that can down the road for many years. That's why we're having this conversation today. It's because we need to stop kicking the can down the road. We need to address these issues.
Because otherwise at front end of the courthouse one morning, you'll come in and it'll be two inches shorter because the whole foundation dropped down and there'll be ducks in the basement and it'll be interesting, you know, charge money. Tourist attraction. But no, I think that needs to be acknowledged. We need to fix that, whatever it takes.
Other questions or comments? Anything in particular for Alison while she's here? Thank you for coming down.
So as it, as it stands, there's three options that are being presented. Most like the cheapest is $14 million and the most expensive is $17.4 million. That is all for additions or largely space stuff. Do I, not, maybe I'm just not saying it clearly or didn't read it clearly. What are our deferred maintenance costs or is that wrapped up in there?
So the, let me pull this up real quick, make sure I'm not misspeaking. The, so the deferred maintenance, the 13.4 million is separate. Let me pull up this spreadsheet real quick. Because the, the 17 point, those numbers that you're seeing for the projects, for the three different options, include deferred maintenance for the LEC and the courthouse. So you have to back those deferred maintenance costs out to get the actual, and I actually did do that.
Thank you. One of the other things we were talking about is just the office space needs of public health and services. And so Commissioner White, tour, there was some discussion among staff, just like there are situations where they need to have a confidential space. And so at those times, someone will leave the office and find elsewhere to work. And, and, and that kind of, you know, led us to more conversations about different work situation.
Flexible workspace.
Yeah, yeah. And just how viable that is or feasible that is. And is that something that you're seeing in other organizations around the region? Do you know that, because I know there are, where was it? Aiken County in partic, or Pine County in particular had some kind of remote. They were going to do an addition, but then they did remote work.
Well, I was also wondering about the St. Louis facility that you, that you mentioned. That was built not too long ago. If that incorporates any of those shared workspace ideas.
Where each staff person does not have their own assigned space. Either of you can explain it better than I, because I only heard it once and so I'm repeating of this. My understanding is that there's any number of individual spaces, but no one, a staff person claims that space because they work out in the community or they're working at home. And when there is a need to have a confidential space to meet with a client or to talk with a client, I, no, I don't know. I'm really confused. I don't know if there are other spaces or they use those spaces, but no one person has a, has a space of their own.
So another way to think about it is that you have, for example, workspaces that are like, I mean, an open cubicle arrangement is really common in a lot of offices, right? Where we've got like several workstations and they've got, you know, partitions, but they're not like enclosed spaces. And then you could also have closed offices for private meetings and so on that are not like dedicated to a particular person. They're just like offices that can be used. I, you know, I think for, and I think you'd want to be really thoughtful about making sure that like supervisors and directors obviously have their own dedicated spaces. I think there's a really strong argument to be made for that. But for, for other positions, it might be feasible to have these kind of shared spaces, both enclosed and not enclosed, where people who are working remotely part of the time could do exactly what Commissioner White is saying and bring their laptop, plug in and work there for the day or the half day or whatever the schedule is. And then at the end of the day, they unplug and they go home. I mean, I think that's something we need to look at seriously. The, you know, the proposals that we have put forward. Again, we have had conversations about those, those options, but we haven't, again, we don't have designs. So that would be the next step is really exploring the feasibility of those. And again, I think talking to other counties who may already be using that kind of arrangement to see how it works and if it would be something that would be feasible for us.
And the one question, Alison, with that format was I needed to know, I mean, my question was how much data, paper data is, is required for day-to-day work with clients for each person? Do they have like paper files of everybody that they keep all the time so that, I don't know where you take that if you don't have a room of your own. I mean, that's, I just heard about this. I, I've never seen it in operation, but it was, I thought, that I thought maybe should be explored and maybe it doesn't work, but maybe everyone else is just doing it because it's, I don't know, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know anything about office spaces.
I'm just curious to hear about that model through public health and human services through that lens. I know in education, it's been done for years where people have had shared space and then gone off to private rooms that are kind of in the corners of a larger space. But I'd just be curious from models that, you know, that you're familiar with, what that's like.
I'll do my best to answer several questions.
Yeah, you have a lot of them.
So I'll start with saying what we've done to date to create remote flexibility for staff. Were feasible and as a way to address our space needs. And we have, as we've shifted people around, doubled, tripled up in rooms, we are planning remote flex schedules, hybrid schedules around those shared spaces. So an example of where that works well is our fiscal team. There are two of them in an office that was once one person's office. And they plan their in-office days around that so that they aren't both in there trying to conduct phone calls at the same time. There's a bit of a, you know, they back each other up in some respects where they are required to be in person to provide that internal customer service to our social workers. Example, so that would be checking out the Visa card or issuing gas or food cards to people who are, you know, needing to travel outside of the county for medical care as an example. So one of them is always in the office to provide that service and that's a way of managing our space needs. They both have a workstation, so if there's an all-staff meeting or some other reason why that brings them both into the office, they both have a place to work. So someone isn't displaced during the day. I would say there are other staff within the department that are also doing that. But for some of our positions, especially social workers, where that in-person component is a huge part of their job, meeting with people face-to-face. Many of the waivers that were put in place during the pandemic to allow us to meet with people virtually are no longer in effect. And we do our best work when we're face-to-face with people, really present to know what they're going through and providing that support in person. So where we have multiple social workers in one office, what you described, Commissioner White, is that shuffle is happening throughout the day. And that isn't a good use of staff time when they're having to leave their workstation to allow one of their colleagues to conduct an interview or take a confidential phone call. We're having to buy sound-reducing, sound-canceling headphones to mitigate that, you know, potential information being shared on a not-need-to-know basis within these shared spaces. Although we, we have been intentional in how we've grouped staff up based on their job function. In terms of your question about files and data and how that's managed when people are working hybrid schedules, that again varies depending on an individual's role, that they have their essential job functions. Some of our staff, I think in our, our public health team generally are very, they have everything digitized. And they started during the pandemic and are very accustomed to the high degree of communication and collaboration, both in terms of their culture within the team and their utilization of some of the technology tools that we have to support that. For some, I'll use our social workers as an example, they are more tied to paper files. They have case files that they're using or paperwork that they're filling out in person with someone. Anytime a person is bringing private data from the office, that's a risk in terms of potential data breach. So some of the things that we've put in place to help manage that are purchasing for our staff who are working hybrid schedules during the pandemic, rolling locked suitcases so that if they're having to transfer files offsite, there's a key combination on that. So if their car is broken into, there's less of a chance that there's a digital breach of data. James, to your point about the St. Louis County Government Service Center that was constructed just before the pandemic in Virginia, my recollection is that they did have some like touchdown spaces for staff who were primarily working remote so that when they come into the office, they can have a place to connect to the secure network, do their documentation, be present for an in-person meeting. Another key function in their design is that they have huddle spaces. And this is a huge deficit. And our space right now is that as we've doubled and tripled up in offices, we can't bring people back into offices to meet with staff because they're sharing space. So that is increasing the demand on our shared spaces in the lobby. We have two interview rooms in the lobby designated to meet with people. We're also increasingly having to bring people back into our public health and human services conference room to conduct interviews or meetings and are also using other spaces throughout the courthouse. We have our picnic tables outside. Now it's the season that we can start meeting with people outside as well. And we have a reservation system in place where if I know that I'm going to be meeting with an individual or family, I can reserve that picnic table in advance and have, please meet outside. But we are limited in our communal meeting spaces and confidentiality again is a challenge there. There are some physical space issues with sound. My understanding is that it's, has to do with the ceiling and the lack of insulation in the ceiling. We've installed panels that help absorb sound, something that Brian recommended based on conversations with other. based on conversations with other facilities directors. We have white noise machines. We've made purchases and, and done, you know, things that we can to manage and mitigate that sound transfer within the office, but it's still something that we're having to constantly be aware of and manage.
The building just wasn't designed at a time when we were mindful about that.
Madam Chair, I have an appointment that I have to go to, so I'm sorry that I have to leave. I look forward to what you're going to send out Friday and to your session.
Other questions for Allison, I want to make.
I miss anything in your questions.
You need to have little, what did she call it, hot spaces? No.
Touchdown.
Huddle spaces, huddle spaces.
Oh, I thought of one more thing that I would like to mention is I just recently, actually yesterday, read an article. There's just research starting to come out about teleworking and hybrid work, since there was such an increase in prevalence of that during the pandemic. And what are we learning from that time period and how do we apply that going forward? And there's research coming out about the risks of hybrid working environments, especially for young people and especially for women in terms of those missed opportunities for mentorship from more experienced leaders or staff within the department. And I think that's a consideration for our team, considering how new we are. We had pretty significant turnover in 2022. And using remote work or hybrid work scheduled as a way to manage our space needs, there's an inherent risk in that to the type of support that we can provide to staff. We're a highly collaborative team. We do our best work when we're together and we're able to consult and get advice from seasoned workers. So I think that's important for you all to be aware of as decision-makers that there are risks with ongoing hybrid and remote work schedules for our workforce and the quality of service we can provide to community members.
Alan, I think clearly your department is, is quite unique compared to, you know, when we talk about remote work policies, the benefits and detriments of remote work, we have to think about your department in a different fashion.
So Commissioner Mills, if I could get back to your question. The option A, B, and C, the costs on those, if you back out the deferred maintenance, that's, that's encompassed in those numbers. The option A is seventeen point four million all included. If you back out deferred maintenance, it's more like eleven point eight. And so you add the eleven point eight to the thirteen point four and you get about twenty-five point two million dollars if you do all deferred maintenance and you add that space. Option B, which is fourteen million dollars, back out deferred maintenance, it's more like eight point four. And the total cost would be twenty-one point eight million. And then option C, which is just shy of fifteen million, back out deferred maintenance, it's nine point four. And then the total cost of that option would be twenty-two point eight million, basically.
So like twenty-five, twenty-three, and twenty-two is that?
Twenty-five, twenty-two, and twenty-three, roughly.
That helps give perspective on.
Yeah.
The differences, right?
Yeah.
Or the lack thereof.
And I just want to recognize Allison and her team for, they, they have done a lot of work to try to make the space work for them. And that has not been easy. And there are a lot of, you know, when you design an office today, it is, it is laid out to be more flexible. So you don't have like exterior office space that blocks light to the middle. In my last job, I had, I was a deputy department director in a department of a hundred and forty people. I had, my, my walls were movable. And so it was, it was an interior space, it didn't have any direct access to, to windows. All the cubicle spaces were on the outer perimeter of the building. So that, that was the trade-off. If you had a cubicle, at least you had more access to light. And so those are the kinds of trade-offs that, that you make in, in that kind of design process. And if, if this space were to be designed today, I think it would look a lot different than it, than it does currently. And so if we're looking at how can we repurpose the space, to your, to your assertion that we maybe don't need additional space, I don't personally buy that. I think we do to some degree. I definitely believe that there are things we could do to this building to make it more functional and to, to better suit our operations. But I don't see getting away from needing to add new space to some degree.
Commissioner Hawkins.
I'm just curious, looking through the plan and conditions of the building. And our community center had four items on the critical list. And our community center needs used a lot. And I know there were space needs over at the LEC, which is why, even though they only had one item that was on the critical list, they have, we have to get them spaced drug there, it goes there, we get that. But I'm wondering about the feasibility, instead of adding on to this building for more space, of adding on to the community center for more space, fix the HVAC, fix the lighting, maybe move some of our activities over to that space, soil and water or our veteran service officer. I don't, don't know exactly what might work, but other counties have, don't have it all in their courthouse.
For sure.
Yeah. When you're looking at what we need to do and what our maintenance needs are, and yes, we need space. But maybe there's a way to not have to add on here. I'm just curious, how we, how we address that?
Can I, could I quickly respond? I think that the grouping of functions that you've just described makes a lot of sense. And we did actually, I mean, the community center was going to be part of this first iteration of the plan. And when we started talking about numbers, it's like, ooh, that's a lot of money. I mean, it's already a lot of money, even without that. And I was really mindful of, you know, what we could reasonably ask county residents to, to undertake. I did not want to come forward with a fifty million dollar CIP. And I'm not saying it costs fifty million dollars, I'm just saying there was a calculation as to, you know, what the upper limit could reasonably be, what, what the public would be willing to accept. There are needs at the community center. It's, I mean, it's got its own really pronounced deficits. And there are ways that you could improve that space that would really provide a lot of benefits to the community. And it's a heavily used building. And so, you know, what you're suggesting, Commissioner Hawkins, is really attractive to me because I, I see that need really clearly. There are still significant issues with this building, whether or not we had space on to it. The ventilation on this side of the building is atrocious. We've talked about that, it's freezing downstairs, it's hot upstairs, vice versa, depending on the season. There's, there's a lot of work that has to be done here regardless of that. But, you know, the, again, when you're talking about co-location of functions, I mean, having court admin and probation and all of that, emergency services over at the LEC, there are a lot of co-benefits that come along with that, too. So I, I don't disagree with you. I think the community center, I would like to see us make some major investments in that building just to, so that it better serves the, the community. We just have to lay out, you know, what, what our tolerance is for cost, what the community is willing to accept. And I'm very, you know, I've heard loud and clear from folks who, they're really skittish about this whole idea. And I get it, it's, it's a lot of cost. And I want to do this in the most responsible way, in, in a way that best serves our, our residents. So there are different ways that you can skin that cat.
One of the comments that Commissioner Hawkins made got me to thinking, you know, talking about the number of people that use the community center. And when I think about our deferred maintenance, I think about the number of people that our building serve and that we need to be thinking about prioritizing our facilities based on what goes on there, what happens within those walls. And so that's kind of the lens that, that I look through part of this, through when we're talking about deferred maintenance. Number of people that are using services. Clearly, this building is, is really critical. It's the most-used building that we have.
It's a building that provides a lot of services, but we do not have a community center, and I'm going to use Grand Portage, they have a community center, they built a community center. We got the one percent tax and we built the YMCA. We did not build a community center, which was something taxpayers wanted, community center. And the community center that we have, that we've had for decades, has just been kind of through the efforts of one person, it has re, and as time has gone along. If you have a graduation party, if you have benefits, if you're going to have a class reunion, you rent out the community center. You don't rent out the YMCA, you don't rent out the courthouse. This is the community center, this is the community's place to gather. We did fundraisers for when our football boys went to Australia to play football in the Down Under. We did, there was a, after a huge funeral, they went over to the community center to celebrate. And the sixth grade dances are at the community center in the summertime. So that, that building, we have a lot of people that need the services that are housed here. But that community center, people feel they use it, they need it, they depend on it because it has, people like the community center, you know? It's like things, good things have happened at the community center. And people don't, they, they recognize, we get Brady and Texas and we have human services. But to make, and the commercial kitchen, I believe, over at the community center has been used a lot for startup, startup businesses or people that don't, yeah, they use it to, to make food themselves. So when we're looking at where to invest deferred maintenance dollars and I'm voting for the community center as being a priority and then the law enforcement. And the law enforcement, I still need more conversation about that. I mean, I do see the value, I guess, of having all of legal services together, you know, legal, that cohort. But I, I guess my real realm of experience is hanging out at the community center and not hanging out in the court system, so I don't know if that's good or bad.
It's not what I've heard.
Really?
What, one thing, thinking about the community center, though, you talked about a lot of activities, that is a place we collect fees. And one of the things on my to-do list is to make sure that we update all our fees. We've been kind of dabbling as, as a county, adjusting fees. But I think that is one area that we could definitely do a better job of is, is using our fees to support some of the, the work that needs to be done in these facilities. Commissioner Mills, you had your.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of my questions for these three options is just what, A, what makes the most sense long-term maintenance-wise? And then B, what makes the most sense operationally? And it's not clear to me what does make the most sense operationally? If, if, having a justice center, is that the best way to do business? Or having multiple floors for a department, is that the best way to, I, you know, I, I, that's what I would really appreciate is that kind of operational perspective. And that's probably going to be coming from you, James, and department heads. And so that's a question I, I have. And then also, so we got our twenty, our numbers there, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three, or whatever. What kind of annual payment would that be if we bonded to the whole shebang? Do you know?
Wait, we'll get back to you on that.
That's this week with elders.
That is the conversation we're having with, with Bruce.
Okay, we have, yeah, we have to look at what cash we might use and the strategies. There's different types of bonds and how we put them at the plate. So that's going to affect it. But clearly twenty-five million, if you're paying that back over twenty years, you'd get the big picture of that significantly.
Commissioner Hawkins.
I agree with Commissioner Mills, you know, trying to decide which is the best route, I'm still struggling. So I guess the justice center idea, I know other counties they've gone that way. It kind of makes sense to me. But I would appreciate maybe having representatives from the court administration here and maybe the judge to give us perspective, what they think of that idea.
And I can tell you, because I've talked to them, because I didn't want this idea to come forward, you know, without getting their feedback. And, and they are supportive. I mean, they see, they see benefits of co-locating these functions. Certainly would make trials a lot easier because you would not be transporting inmates from the LEC over to the courthouse, it would all be within the same building. You know, and a lot of the other functions, I mean, court admin, just having, having the law enforcement presence there would be useful also with locating the EOC, that is the Emergency Operations Center and the Emergency Manager over there, that would be a, a logical fit. So, but then you would lose some, you would lose some advantages that we currently have, which is a lot of clients, for example, at Public Health and Human Services may also have business with the county attorney who works probation. So we have, we have that, that benefit right now, having those services close to each other. So I, you know, what is operationally the optimal thing to do? I'm not entirely sure.
And having shift with the highway engineer, there's more traffic on that road again. And we just were talking about having traffic on, on truck road.
On the gun flint.
Yeah, I guess that would be, yeah, another issue.
Concept.
And then, but then, okay, we moved the court people out, what are we going to do with the second floor?
It would be repurposed for, I mean, the additional space that, for Public Health and Human Services.
Then we can just, that's, that's a. Oh, no, I understand, but the point is that, so then we're just going to make certain that every person that works in Public Health and Human Services has their own space and we have.
Not necessarily.
You know, like.
We, we have other, we have other folks, human resources. Neither Leah nor Kathy has a workspace. There's, I mean, Leah is squatting in an office in IT.
Meeting spaces, too, we don't have that, or huddle spaces, I guess, we don't have that.
Yeah.
So we, right, there's a number of, it would be used.
Definitely.
It, it's just what, what, what makes the most sense operationally? What makes the most sense the long-term? And that's, that's just not clear to me. Another thing I want to ask you about is that June twenty-seventh deadline. I'm not comfortable with that. I want to make sure that we're doing this as thoroughly and getting as many questions answered as possible. I, I just don't know that the June twenty-seventh, I know you, you, you've drawn that line and.
Couple, a couple of thoughts about that. So we could have another special meeting before that, if, if you all were amenable to that. We could push the deadline back. I mean, it's something, I set that deadline for, for myself, for our team so that we would have something to deliver to you.
Yeah.
But I totally agree, you guys need to be comfortable. You need to make, you need to know that you have the information you need to make the decision. And so I wouldn't, it's not hard and fast. But there are a couple of different ways we can address that, so you are more comfortable by whatever the decision date is.
I mean, I'm thinking clearly our committee the whole next month needs to have a, a big focus on this. And I think one or maybe two special meetings might be needed. Because it's, it's a lot and we need to do it right for our committee.
And more ways to get it out to the public. I mean, again, I mean, and I'll tell you, there was a phone conversation yesterday with a person that I probably won't talk to again for quite a while, because I'm so appalled at the person's reliance on the rumor mill and not wanting to hear. I mean, it's like, well, you voted to not do the EVA and the HRA together, and so now you're just costing us another $100,000. And then in trying to explain, and it's like, this wall went up, and it's like, who are you? And that's the part of the community, surprisingly, that doesn't matter what you say. I mean, I knew at that moment in time, it's like, another one gone. But, you know, it's like, it's like that, almost hostile, I mean, it was hostile, hostility to hearing what, you know, and it's too bad. But anyway, that's, people like to know, and those that people, the people that want to know, want to know, and those that don't want to know, they just want to be not happy. That's my conclusion. So I got to share that with someone.
Well, this is going to be on the website, there's going to be more information, and we have all of us, we have the newspaper, we have our local radio station. Communicate, communicate, communicate. There still will be those individuals that are not going to hear the options, but we need to do our best.
And the approval of this plan, again, there are multiple steps that have to happen after this plan is approved. This is like approving investments in deferred maintenance and a concept for moving forward. It is not a plan, it's not like, we would still need to, we would still need to, like, contract with a consultant or with an architectural firm to actually do space planning and building design. So...
And do we have to make a motion? I mean, it's like two parts. We've got the deferred maintenance, which is a no-brainer around the county. I mean, it's like, yeah.
It's a no-brainer, but there's still decisions to be made within that process.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, as to the, what's more important, and, yeah, there's a lot of... But there's seemingly really good taxpayer support for that part of it, who's...
That's accurate.
And then, as you said, there's a lot of skepticism about another building project. You know, like, you know, I just believe we need to educate, you know, educate, educate, educate. That's, you know, and there are the options to explore about new spaces. The designs that are there are like, you know, napkin designs, they're very nice. But what are the other options that we're out there? I appreciate there was something, it's got a lot of conversation going, particularly the idea of having a justice center. Oh, that could be helpful. And I believe that, just conversations, that without a doubt, the law enforcement, it's understood that they really shouldn't be eating lunch on the same place where they were going through meth, parfum, or whatever evidence, you know, I mean, there's... So that, those two parts, and so, okay, we just need a lot more time. June 29 is like tomorrow.
We also need lunch.
Another thing that I was minded of, too, just from Commissioner Mills, the report on the conversation is that both the EVA and HRA need space. I don't know if that's been considered into this, making sure that we can, we can pay, the public can pay rent for the space, or the public can, you know, the building. So if we're looking to, for efficiency in operations and costs, that's one way, I think, makes sense. I also really like that Solon Otter idea, so that seems operationally to be a good move. And I appreciate your sensitivity to costs. But if that makes the most sense in the long run, I think we need to be in for the long run here. If we can do that, it'll have later staff, sure, that's, I'm fine with that. We don't have to do it all at once, but I really like the idea of identifying those kinds of efficiencies and then working towards those, so... Yeah, it's a big process, and that's why I'm like, June 27, I don't know if 2023 is the year for us to do it, even. Just because of what I'm hearing about concerns and conversations and ideas, I want to move forward, and we need to budget for it, and we need to get that plan. I just don't know about those details, you know.
It's a phased plan, right? So we don't have to do everything this year.
Correct, right.
Do we have any roughs that are leaking this year?
Yeah, I was actually dreaming about it leaking roof last night. Literally, that just reminded me. Yeah, I may be spending too much time at work. Yeah, we need to, I mean, there are things that are acute, that we need to get to this...
Right, and so, so we say, okay, we're going to work on this building. Maybe we hit the acute things, I mean, the critical things, like, you know, like so that it doesn't burn down this year, or, you know, the wiring, the roofs.
That's how it's set up.
And so to do those, and then, if, you know, but to not, we don't need to keep rushing things.
Well, we're catching up.
Well, right, but we're going to catch up, but we don't need to like catch up all over the summer of '23.
That's not what we're proposing yet.
Reminding, 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 we need to talk it down, and then make a decision.
Well, so we've done the first part.
No, we have not yet talked it down.
We've just begun. I think there's a song, "We've Only Just Begun."
That's right.
But you don't want to hear me sing. So I suggest we have a number of minutes that are attached to our agenda for information, and that we adjourn, and that we come back and have added several more times.
And Chair, if I might, there's some next steps at the bottom of this, of our packet, and there's a number of bullet points there that maybe we want to talk about to give, to help give James some direction, unless you feel like you have adequate direction as is.
Yes, interpret all of this.
Yeah, I need to digest all of this. This is exactly, though, thank you, this is exactly the kind of conversation I wanted to have, and this feedback is super helpful. Clearly, a lot more discussion that we need to have. I do want you all to be comfortable by the time we get to approving the plan. And I also, you know, we, so we are accepting public comments on the plan that was posted yesterday. And I imagine that will help inform our future conversations. In the meantime, I will get you all the comments that have been collected today, so you can use that in your ongoing deliberation about our steps forward.
That'll be helpful.
And I would like to have some paper copies, because I have a constituency that likes to... What do you mean about this?
Well, with that, we shall adjourn. Thank you all very much.
You were holding that hostage?
Yep.
I thought she was...
She, I was like, you're not...
She wasn't going to get, let you get away with that.
Doing shegels, you're off the rails.
Just bring it back.
I remember, that's what I'll do. I'll take them with me, and then I'll bring them back.